The budget workshop to order. And we stand and have the invocation and the pledge. I'll ask Commissioner Langley if he'll give the invocation and Commissioner Redbolt's pledge.
God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful, God, that we are entering to our new budget season. Father, grant us the wisdom and understanding and compassion for your people to make wise and prudent decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item of business is a conflict of interest disclosure statement. Okay, hearing none. We're down to the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second? All right, all those in favor of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to items for presentation. The first item, and only item tonight, is the manager's recommended budget presentation to the Board of Commissioners. Brian, you're up.
If that's all right. So good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and present to you the new fiscal year recommended budget. You have the agenda packet or the budget pack in front of you. And again, we'll go through this. I know this has been, for some of you, this is pretty old hat in the way it's laid out, but we do have some new folks and want to make sure we kind of go through that and also for the folks who are watching and listening and may be their first time. So this is the manager's recommended 2021 fiscal year budget. You have the binder in front of you and it contains the recommended annual budgets required by North Carolina General Statute 159 and the Local Budget and Physical Control Act. In general, you are aware there are three parts of this budget. The first section is the continuation budget that essentially provides for the services next year exactly what you're doing this year. It continues those services, roughly what we call the continuation budget. We start that out each year when we have conversations with you at the planning session about what it is you want, what it is you don't want, any changes you'd like to see. And then we incorporate that into what we call the continuation budget. In that, the section contains the financial information, the narrative descriptions, the programs and services. So our goal in the budget book itself is for the reader to be able to pick it up and to look at those individual sections and understand what those departments do, what their function is, and where they spend the money that's been allocated to them by the board. You'll see that broken down as it normally has been with prior year actuals. Then you'll have a requested that came from the department heads. You'll have a recommended that comes from the county manager. And then you'll have the final column that the board puts in place that says the final adopted budget. The financial summaries are also on there, so you'll see a roll-up in the front where you'll see personnel and benefits, you'll see operating, and you'll see capital. So they roll up on the front page and then on the back page you'll see the individual line items. Now, we go through those line items individually, line item by line item with budget, with department heads when we go through the budget. We look at those, they make their comments, and then we go through and look at histories and look at and talk about things that they feel they need and make sure that we're covering everything if there've been any changes. The last part of the book is the fee manual. And the fee manual is the section of the book where you attempt, as the board, to recover some of the costs associated with specific services that you provide. It's not just the general fund piece, like if you're doing specific activities that are targeted towards certain individuals who are using those services. It's a way to recover costs associated with the individuals who are taking advantage of that service. So it may not be generally broadly spread across all taxpayers. As you recall, the budget is required to be balanced, and it is, and it's done in accordance with the policies and procedures outlined in the North Carolina Local Budget and Physical Control Act. So there's a statute that we follow when we do this. Just a little bit about the process. You remember that in January of every year, we kick off the budget process with the board's planning retreat. And at that retreat, we discuss with the board, we first give you an update on where we are, where we think we're going to roll out the year at, any changes that department heads may see from their interactions with their associations, what they see legislatively may be coming up. They take the opportunity to explain those things to you and give you their vision for what they see, that they may need, and then it gives the board the opportunity to ask questions about that, to note from your own experiences through your association, the Association of County Commissioners, what you see coming down the line legislatively, both at the state level and at the federal level, and how you plan to respond to that, and how you want to maintain or discontinue or change the services that you're currently providing to the citizens of Beaufort County. So after that is done, we put out budget requests to department heads and outside agencies. They turn those in. We hold individual sessions with each department head to go through their budget, as I mentioned earlier. We do a final review, and then we look at revenues. And the reason, you know, people will say, well, that's kind of backwards. You're working on a budget where you're looking at expenditures before you're looking at revenues. And unfortunately, some folks take that in a bad light. The reason we do revenues last is because that's when the revenues are, we get finalized on revenues. Those don't get finalized until April, basically because of the way the statutes are written so that business, personal property has an extension, and usually it's a little bit later. So we're working through the expenditure side, and then we look at what our revenue side is, again, based on the timing of when they come in. The budget is being presented tonight, as you'll see, at a special call meeting. You also will hold budget sessions. They'll start Thursday. We'll do a general fund on Thursday where we'll go through the budget on the general fund side. That'll be this Thursday, and then next Tuesday we'll do that and work through the remainder of the general fund budget and start in the enterprise funds. Of course, you know, the enterprise funds are the water fund, the sewer, the water fund and the solid waste fund, and those are funds that are essentially dealt with as business entities where the revenues are to offset the total costs of the services. So they're dealt with in that way. Then we have a night where we look at service expansions. And again, service expansions are those things that are new or different or a change in the level of service that you're currently providing. It's the opportunity for department heads to come and pitch their proposals to you about what they think may be needed as a new service. They may come to you and say, we need to change this service. But ultimately, it's the board's decision on how we do that. That's why we break them out separately. The budget is the board's opportunity to get done for its constituents what it wants through the budget, by its budget process. So you'll hear from outside agencies, they're going to ask you for additional funding. You're going to hear from, probably from some new outside agency who are looking for funding. So it's your opportunity to look at those individually, separate from the continuation budget, and talk about those, decide if you want to do it, decide if you don't want to do it, ask additional questions of those folks, and find out where it goes. There is a budget hearing that you are required to have, a public hearing that's required by the statute. You have to have one public hearing on a budget before it is adopted. That opportunity for the public to make comments on the budget is June the 7th at your regular meeting, June the 7th of this year. If, we've also scheduled an additional special call meeting the next week, or actually, it's that Thursday, Thursday the 10th. So in case you want to spend some additional time with the budget after public comments, if there's some changes you want to make after you hear from the public, that gives you the opportunity to do that. What we're looking to understand from you at the end of the process is where you want to be, because we have to put the budget ordinance together and have it in place for you, in paper, for you to see before you can adopt that budget. So we would just need to know if you, where you feel like you're going to be. Again, the goals of the budget is what we strive for during the coming year, and we communicate those during the process, and they're incorporated into the recommended budget. And those are to rely upon financial plans and systems in how we prepare the budget so we're not just willy-nilly going about things. We have financial plans and systems in place that we're tracking and looking. We conservatively estimate revenues and expenditures to avoid expectations of performance that are unrealistic. So we don't bring you a revenue side. We don't just look at something and say, oh, well, let's do this and let's just fudge the revenue number up, or let's fudge the expenditure number down. We want to do those in a manner that's conservative and they avoid those issues where they are not realistic. So we don't want to put you in a bind. We also try to create an atmosphere for our department heads where there is not the temptation to spin down budgets at the end of the fiscal year. If you spent time in state government or if you spent time in the federal government, your job at the end of the year is to spend every bit of money you have, because if you don't, you won't get it. That is not the way we do budgets, and that's not the way we communicate to our department heads. Unfortunately, at those levels, at the state and federal level, you essentially get penalized for not spending your money. We tell our folks, we're not going to penalize you. We want to look at what you're doing, we want to make sure that you're spending it appropriately. But if you bring money back at the end of the year, we're not going to penalize you necessarily take it away from you next year, because we don't want them to look at the end of the year and say, well, I got to spend that and I got to get rid of it so that I get it next year. That's not the way we do budgets. We also try to present a budget that reevaluates expenditures and allows policy review and potential service expansions or reductions based on policy directives from the board. And then again, the last piece of that is also to provide an analysis of the general government cost centers and enterprise fund cost centers so that people know what services are being provided with what dollars. Not only is it a budget document, but it's an educational document as well. You should be able to go to this document and read and understand what those departments are doing, what their mission is, what their services they're providing, and how much it's costing to do that. So in general, the overview, you know, it's been a difficult year, as you all well know. We come through with COVID. There are, vaccines are in place now, some of the restrictions are being lifted, and folks are being able to move about and essentially feel like they're getting back to normal. Overall, we've, the county weathered the COVID pandemic fairly well. As you recall, last year, we looked at the budget and we said, we're going to be in trouble. Everybody was telling, all the folks who were, the estimators were saying, everybody's going to be in trouble over this thing. Watch your sales tax revenues, they're going to fall off. We don't know what's going to happen. Things are going to shut down, they're going to be terrible. Well, things did shut down, and we anticipated that they would be terrible. We cut our revenues in anticipation of that being the case, and thankfully, that's not what occurred. We actually saw in some instances where state revenues on the sales tax decreased more than what we had done. And we outpaced the state as a whole several times in the months we collected sales tax. So that was good. Still don't know where that's going to finally end up. We can't continue the fuel that's been poured on to the economy by some of the relief pieces. It's good that they put those in place to try to help get through these things, but our challenge is to understand when that fire starts getting turned down and when those revenues start to turn just a little bit. Our hope is that they stay, we are expecting a downturn in them. We hope it's not a significant downturn, but we would not be doing our job if we didn't look at them and think, you know, there's been some artificial inflation to, not artificial inflation, there's been some artificial stimulus put in place to keep things moving in order to keep the economy moving. And eventually, that will go away as these relief programs phase out, and we've got to be prepared to see those trends change. So overall, the recommended budget maintains the county adjuvant rate at 63.5 cents, so there's not a tax increase related to this budget. It's assumed at the collection rate that we have that will generate approximately $37.5 million in property tax revenue. This budget, this recommended budget maintains all county services and programs that were provided in the prior year. Now, there is a significant change in one piece of that, and that is the delivery method. And when I talk about the delivery method, that's relating to the school resource officers in the school system. They're still, you're still providing that service, or you're still helping pay for that service to be provided. It's just not being provided through the sheriff's office. It's being provided by the school system through a private contract with Allied Universal. So you are still funding it, and the service is still being provided, it is just in a different delivery manner than it was last year. Out of that, however, there have been positions in the sheriff's office that were related to SROs. Obviously, if you're not providing that service, those positions have to go away, and the funding for that is transitioned, as you did in your, in one of your previous meetings, to the contract with the school, that the school has in place with Allied Universal to provide that service. So the recommended general fund budget is $62.8 million. That's about 5.8% greater than it was for the original budget last year. And that increase is driven mostly by the implementation of the 2017 Pay and Classification Plan. And then a couple of pieces in here that are, there are a couple, two big ticket items. There's a recommendation here for a half a million dollar expansion to build a storage and distribution facility for the county. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then there's an additional $500,000 in here for the community college system, for the boat building curriculum that they asked you for, for their building. So those are, those are two of the, those are additional drivers to that. The recommended budget increases the public school system, both the K-12 and the community college funding, community college funding levels over the prior year. As you recall, the K-12 system asked that their budget be maintained at the same level of current expense and capital funding as of the 2021 levels, but there was an addition of $603,600 for the SROs. Now, originally, this board was at the level of $650,000. There were some changes that the school system made in vehicles. They were originally going to use that, the Allied, it's my understanding Allied Universal was going to use SUVs. They negotiated with them to not do that and use regular sedans, and in that, they were able to decrease that cost a little bit. So instead of 650, it's 603,600. And then there's an increase of $563,025 to the community college, which is mostly related to the half a million dollar boat building curriculum capital expense, where they're putting that building up to help for the boat building curriculum. The recommended budget continues to fund the capital improvement plan. Several years ago, in 1920, you set aside a penny of the tax rate to do that, and that has paid dividends. It has allowed us a constant revenue stream to look at and work on maintenance and capital issues that we need with our buildings. You did a plan several years ago where we had an engineering firm come in and look at all our buildings and the tremendous cost that they estimated over the next 20 years on what it would take to keep buildings in place. So that was the first step in helping maintain that. The recommended budget maintains prior year fire EMS taxes, so there were no requests for increases from the districts on that. The recommended budget does recommend an increase of $5 in the solid waste fee, and that's to offset the cost of increasing solid waste tonnage and help pay for the new contract, that three-year contract to operate the landfill. It is also recommended in the budget that the water rates increase by 3%, and that's in accordance with the long-term funding plan established and approved by the board in fiscal year 1819. And this is the fourth year of the five-year plan to equalize rates across all districts due to the consolidation of the districts into one operational fund. Remember, there's seven districts several years ago. You brought them down into one, into one fund, so they're essentially operated under that. And the goal was to equalize rates across all those because we were, we essentially were having, we had different rates in each district. And you could be at one house right at the corner of the district, and the house right across the street from you was in another district, and the rates were different. So the board chose to do that. So generally, in the general fund, generally in the general fund, sorry about that. So in the general fund, $62,822,367 is the recommended continuing operations budget. It maintains the tax rate at the same level, and it's a total, well, we've estimated a total valuation of a little over $6 billion. And it's made up of 5.4 billion in real and personal and about 519 million in motor vehicles. The collection rate is assumed at 98% and 100% for the motor vehicles. The real collect, the collection rate is down 0.19% from last year and from prior audited year period. And the LGC allows us to use the actual audited number from 1920, and that was 98.10. But we're still, again, in trying to make sure that we're conservative in what we do on those revenue side, we're only budgeting that at 98%. So it gives us just a little bit of cushion there in case we still have some lingering The estimated total real property valuation is up approximately 1.48% or about $80 million from FY 2021. We anticipate that that will continue to grow. You'll see in a minute when we talk about the sales ratios and some of the things that the new administration, the new tax administrator is doing, following up on some things and looking at some prior programs and making sure they are still compliant. I believe we will continue to find some valuation there that we currently have not seen. You'll see the table there on the third page that shows the historic tax rate. And what we do, we show that on the, every, on the eight-year cycle for when you do revaluation. So you see where we were eight years ago. We were at 53 cents, went through revaluation, and went through some changes, and we're at 63.5. The next piece is the chart that shows the sales assessment ratio. That's done every year by the Department of Revenue. And essentially, what it does is, you know, it looks at the market and then it looks at where you are in your revaluation cycle. And essentially, it allows the effective, it gives you the effective tax rate, and it lets you essentially look at apples to apples across the state. Because depending upon where you are in your revaluation period, it looks different than someone, another county, where they are in their revaluation period. So when you are, it looks at market compared to where you are. Now, you'll see that we ran these numbers, and Beaufort County is, ranks 37 among 100 counties, with 100 being the highest tax rate, effective tax rate in the state. You're a 37. Craven County, of our neighbors around us, Craven County is the only one that's lower. You currently have a, the 2021 sales ratio that was published by the Department of Revenue is 0.8994. You'll see where you take the current tax rate of 63.5 cents, you multiply it times the ratio, and that gives you an effective tax rate of 57.11. So essentially, it's saying that the market has higher value right now than what you have had it valued based on your valuation. The challenge that we run into with this is that we are now in the fourth year of our revaluation program, and the tax assessor is going to talk to you about this. He may do it, he'll do it during budget, and he may have some offline conversation with you. But because we dropped below 90%, the state of North Carolina has some rules in place that public utilities, they're valued, railroads, the electric companies, the gas companies, those folks, we don't value that, that property, that real property. The state of North Carolina values that. So they peg it at the number that we, when we do our revaluation, they revalue it at that time, and then it stays. But because we dropped below 90%, next year, they will, they will take and adjust down based on this number, the 0.8994, whatever that sales ratio is at the time. They'll adjust those values down because essentially, they're saying they're overvalued, so they've got to come down. So we'll take a little bit of a hit next year based on that. And that just means that the market is performing and it's growing stronger, which is a good thing. But because you only value a snapshot in time once every eight years, and you peg it and you don't change it for another eight years, it gets out of whack sometimes. The real interesting piece of that was, you know, last year before, when we had the housing bubble and things really got messed up, usually you see property appreciate and gain value. During that time, we saw property do the opposite and depreciate and lose value. And you actually had, at one time, your sales ratio was above one. I mean, you had it valued, you had it valued higher than what the market was actually valued at. And people get really upset about that. But you only have the opportunity to change that value once every eight years or once every time you redo your reevaluation. You can do that as often as you like, but you have to do it at least every eight years. Some counties do that every four years. In real high-growth counties, they do that in a shorter time period than eight years, essentially to try to keep up with the changing market. And again, it's not to, and I always have to say this very carefully, it's not to raise additional revenue, it's to more equitably distribute the tax burden across all taxpayers based on the value of their property. Because you are valuing, it's called an adjuvant tax, you are taxing on the value of the property. So that's where that stands. Good news in seeing that, again, will have some, will have some impact from that next year. Projected sales tax revenues are up a little over $2 million, or about 25.87%. And that is from last year's original, and that is because we intentionally took those numbers down last year. With all the information we were getting and everything that everybody thought, when you shut the economy down and people aren't buying stuff, sales tax drops off. Well, sales tax didn't drop off for us. In some places in North Carolina, it did, and we outperformed, like I said, we outperformed the state several times along those. But we saw an increase in our sales tax at some levels we had never seen before. Historically, we had never seen that high. So I think what, internally, what we saw, what we thought was, you see that the big-box stores that were allowed to remain open continued and they thrived. Some of our smaller independent businesses took it on the chin and had a hard time. But overall, the economy did well. Internal governmental revenues are expected to increase by about $930,000, and that's anticipated as additional revenue that comes in from the EMS general fund tax revenues and the EMS cost settlement. That's the Medicaid cost settlement that we do. Licensing and fees are projected down near about $400,000, and that's due to the $428,000 reduction in the SRO grants. So remember, we would get the SRO grant from the schools and we'd turn around and use that to offset the cost of providing, the sheriff's deputies to provide that service. That grant came from the state of North Carolina, and over the years, the state of North Carolina has bumped that grant up. It used to be we only got about $60,000 a year, and then with the bad things that started happening around schools across the nation, they started bumping up those resources. And so it got to about $428,000. But that grant will now stay with the school system, and they will use that money to pay for those services. And we will not have that coming in. Obviously, investment earnings, if you've looked at your bank statement recently, investment earnings are not well at all. The Fed is continuing to hold those rates artificially low to keep the economy doing well, and that has taken a, that's taken a toll on us in that for our idle cash, we're only projecting about $75,000. We're not recommending any fund balance appropriation this year, so that's a zero. And as of June 30th of 2020, the unassigned general fund, fund balance was a little over two, a little over $20 million, or about 34.83% of expenditures. And at the close of this year, we're anticipating that that will be somewhere around $23 million or about 27%. So the board has a policy that you stay at about 35% of revenue to, or fund balance to expenditures. There's been discussion with the board over the years as to whether you thought that was too high. It has dipped down over the past few years. It's come back up. But again, that's a discussion for the board to have. We would advocate again for a strong fund balance policy in that we are subject to natural disasters more than most folks in North Carolina due to hurricanes, and it takes us a while to get those reimbursements from FEMA, and it helps us tremendously on our credit when we go to borrow money, when we have a good, strong fund balance, and it allows us to weather those storms literally and figuratively as we wait for reimbursement from the feds. On page five, you'll see the revenue sources. And if you took that and looked at it year over year over year, you'd see that the property tax portion of that has grown larger and larger. Revenues, revenues funding counties, and it's across the state, are becoming, it's taking more general, more tax dollars to do that. And essentially, what I recall is, several years ago, that was a conscious decision by the General Assembly to say, counties, counties have the ability to do that, counties and municipalities have the ability to do that, and we're going to start changing some of the way we fund and let them start picking up a higher burden. So I think if you went back and looked over the years, I know that if you look at ours, you'll see that slowly crept up. So just overall, in general, for the expenditure side, we'll talk about cost centers. Across all the departments, you'll see some portion of an increase due to the adoption of the 2017 Pay and Classification Plan that you did several months ago. In general government cost centers, we exclude the debt service and the transfer, so we look at that equit- so we look at that equitably. Um, they're increased by about seventeen and a half percent from the original from last, from last year. And like I talked about earlier, the biggest driver in this is our recommendation to expend about a half a million dollars to construct a county warehouse slash storage facility that we can use as a collection and receiving site and as a distribution site when we have natural disasters. Um, we are also spending a tremendous amount of money storing uh items, whether that be evidence for the sheriff's office or whether that be paper, uh, records and documents from the finance, or records and documents uh that are based on um, uh, the schedule that we have to maintain that the state sets about how long you have to keep a piece of paper. Um, so we're spending a lot of money on that, but we also have the need to have a place where when a hurricane comes through, we can receive emergency supplies and then, and then we can distribute them. Um, and we think that this is an opportunity to do that um in a year where, where we have some strong growth. Um, human services cost centers, um, they're up by about seven point five percent. That's driven mostly by increases in DSS and the Health Department, but those are due to state expenditure increases. Overall, the percentage of county dollars to state dollars is roughly the same. So they've held the line uh in what they do um in, in percentage-wise. There's a slight increase in veteran services because we have a new veteran services officer, and we want to make sure that we're able to meet the professional development needs that she has to, to keep that office running the way it needs to be. Um, community costs, community services cost centers, uh, those increased overall by about one point nine percent. That is mainly driven again by the Paying Implementation Study. And then you have in that corporate extension, which has some state increases on the salary side, um, which you have no control over. Um, under the education cost centers, they're up about six point three percent, as we talked about earlier. Uh, the K-12 system maintains their, their levels from twenty-twenty-one for current expense and capital, but we do add in the additional uh six oh three, six hundred for SROs. And you'll see that in the bu, in the book. It'll be a line item that reads SRO funding. We did that a couple of years ago so that you could see that, um, so you'll see that broken out. Um, the community college, again, was an increase of five hundred and sixty-three thousand and change, and that's related to the half million dollar boat building, uh, building, and then they had some additional state increases on, on the personnel side. Um, public safety cost centers, they're essentially flat, but there's been some significant movement in those, although they're flat. Um, the sheriff's office expenditures decreased uh by five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's due to the loss of those thirteen SRO positions when the school moved to the contract. Um, and then the EMS expenditures increased by about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was due to the pay study and to the replacement, the scheduled replacement this year of an ambulance. Um, so essentially, that cost center is flat, but there's, there's some pretty significant changes across that cost center. And you'll see, again, the pie chart that shows uh where those expenditures are. Moving into enterprise funds, again, these are the enterprise funds that, that look at, um, these services as a business-like function. Um, in the water fund, the recommended budget's a little over eight million dollars, and includes the continuation of the rate study that was established in fiscal year eighteen nineteen in which you were consolidating the existing rates over a five-year period so that you have uniform rates across all classes. And then there is the three percent increase, which was recommended according to that study. It continues the ten-year CIP for the entire water system that was established in FY eighteen nineteen, and their expenditures, the amount of roughly a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for capital, that's spread across equipment and vehicles. Um, there is new debt service that's proposed, that's in the amount of ninety, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, and that's to finance the installation of about a eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a SCADA system. Um, the SCADA system we have for the water system is, is, is absolutely on its last leg and needs to be replaced. It's how they maintain, um, it's how, it's how they know how full the tanks are and when they need to move things around. Um, so what we proposed, that was in the CIP that you did several years ago, uh, and it was listed as a borrowing package. So we've shown that as a borrowing package. Um, I think it's a ten-year borrowing package, um, at about two and a half percent rate. Um, it's a, like I say, it's a, it's a good time to borrow money now. Um, and um, so we're showing that as a new debt package, and um, we can certainly talk about whether you want to, you know, pay for that outright or whether you'd rather um do a borrowing package on it. And then we can, we fund consens, uh, contingency at twenty-two thousand, three sixty-six. On the solid waste fund side, the budget is a, a little over four million dollars. Um, it does include a five-dollar increase from the prior year for, it was one sixty, the recommendation is one sixty-five, and that's to pay again for the increased tonnage that we see across the county and for the new three-year landfill maintenance contract. Uh, we also continue the administrative fee, uh, just like we do with the water fund because they're our general fund operators, whether that be the finance department, whether it be the county manager's office, whether it be HR, that provides services to those enterprise funds, and they rightly should pay for those because they're using that. Um, so we, we, we show those transfers, and then contingency is funded at a little over twelve thousand dollars. On the last page of this, so you'll see the summary, uh, I was just kind of wrapping it up for you. Um, again, the recommended budget continues county-provided services and operations and does so at the current ad valorem tax rate of sixty-three and a half cent per one hundred dollars worth of valuation. Um, there's some changes in delivery service methods, showing the privatization of school resource officers by the school system, uh, but fiscal support for the county for those services continues. Uh, the budget increases funding for personnel services in response to the board's adoption of the twenty-seventeen Paying Classification Study earlier this year, and additional support is also provided to the community college in furtherance of its boat manufacturing curriculum. Uh, the budget increases fees associated with water and sewer enterprise funds to maintain operations and continue implementation of previously approved plans. Um, Beaufort County, like its neighbors around the state, nation, and world, has suffered tremendous loss during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, as of the writing, when I wrote this at the time, it was ninety-four. Um, today, it's ninety, it was ninety-three, it's now ninety-four. Residents of the county have died from the virus. Some of our businesses in the county have flourished, while others have, have, have not, and some have failed. Um, overall, students and families have worked hard to adjust to socially distant classrooms and the loss of personal interaction. Through it all, however, people have pulled together to support and help each other out. A special thanks, yeah, to all the county staff members who worked tirelessly to help combat the COVID-nineteen virus through testing, tracing, and vaccinating. Um, they helped relieve suffering, and they saved lives. And also, special thanks to those who may not have been on, on the county's medical front line, but continue to work throughout the pandemic to make sure that critical county services never stop for those who needed them. The restarting of local, state, and world economies in, in the upcoming year are going to be really important to this budget, um, it's going to make or break it and how it performs. Um, there are also potential opportunities with the American Rescue Fund, uh, to, to American Rescue Act fund to, uh, to provide for some of these proposed expenditures in the budget. Um, as additional guidance continues to come out, we may be able to pay for some of those things, especially as it relates to water infrastructure and the new warehouse dis, and the new warehouse slash distribution building we're proposing. Um, additional guidance is being provided by treasury on an ongoing basis, and time will determine what these final opportunities may be. Um, also, I hope the board will build upon its existing plan that it put in place for broadband infrastructure and fund a significant portion of that with American Rescue Act funds. Um, putting together a budget is a tremendous effort, um, as you all well know. Um, special thanks to the, to the finance department staff, who did an outstanding job of helping create an informative and functional budget that serves as a management tool and an outline from which the board can debate policy. I'm extremely thankful for their many hard hours, many long hours of hard work. Um, and I'm especially grateful to the exceptional work done by Finance Director Anita Radcliffe. Um, she helped develop this budget while simultaneously working to complete three right, three refinancing packages that will ultimately save the county more than four million dollars. Let me say that one more time. Um, the finance officer for Beaufort County managed her department, put this budget together, and it simultaneously refinanced three borrowing packages that will save the county four million dollars over the life of the loan. So she did an absolutely fantastic job, and, and should be recognized for that. Department managers, as always, did an outstanding job of analyzing and piling their budgets that met the expectations that they were given. Um, they deserve many thanks and tremendous apparition for the jobs that they do. And I say this every year, and I mean it every year. Um, there's no doubt that the people who work and make the decision to work for county government, because it is a decision to do that, um, that they are truly special people who care about their community and take pride in providing services that make life better for others, and I am truly grateful to have the opportunity to work with them. This is the, this is your twenty-twenty-one recommended budget for your review, and we look forward to having those continued discussions as you go through your budget workshops. Um, I'm happy to take any of your questions you may have now, um, or you can take time and, and dig into it. We'll be ready to, be ready to go in it on Thursday night, uh, starting at five o'clock uh in this, in this room. The chairs will be back to full capacity. Uh, whenever the board is comfortable in moving back to your full capacity, we'll certainly do that, but we're going to go ahead and move the, the, the public seating back since the restrictions have been lifted. Um, we are happy to, again, I'm happy to take any questions, um, or I'm happy to close it out and sit down.
Any, any questions of, uh, Ryan? John?
Ryan, the presenters starting Thursday night, is that going to be in the order that the book is?
Yes, sir. Typically, that's the way we work through it. We start on the general fund side, and we work through that. Uh, our hope, uh, is to get three quarters of the way through the general fund so that you have the ability to, to finish off the general fund on Tuesday and then talk about just, um, the, the enterprise funds. And then next Thursday is, is essentially the big night, and that's when you have all the, the outside agencies and the, and departments come in and talk to you about those potential service expansions and, and have some interaction with you and explain, you know, why they think those are good ideas and, and for you to deliberate that. Then you've got time next to, to, to work through the budget yourself, make any changes you want to make. Um, and then we're looking for, you know, June seventh for potential, first for a public hearing, and then for potential adoption if you want to, and then later in the week if you don't want to.
Any other comments? If not, we will recess until Thursday, May the twentieth at five o'clock. Thank you.